Okay, we're first going to recess our regular meeting and go into our public hearing for the 2024 advertised budget. I'll go ahead and read the budget estimates. For Casino Riverboat, $100,000. General, $9,529,382. Place pension, zero. Courthouse lease rentals, $557,982. Highway special, $2,45,560. Local roads and street, $240,000. Motor vehicle highway, $2,505,73. Cumulative bridge, $780,000. Cumulative building, $265,950. Consulting, or, excuse me, continuing education, $2,500. Jail lease rental, $336,119. Aviation, $250,510. Humiliative capital development, $311,300. Economic development income tax credit, $1,807,920. County user fees, $37,300. Local health department trust account, $5,000. Supplemental juvenile probation services, $15,000. Supplemental adult probation services, $64,600. Flatbook fees, $8,000. Local health maintenance, $58,000. Drug fee community, $16,000. Free trial program grant, $85,345. Family recovery grant, $106,200. Veteran courts grant, $179,500. Court interpreter, $3,000. JDAI grant, $52,500. County elected officials training, $5,000. CASA grant, $29,000. D R M O, $5,000. Community crossings, MG highway, $1 million. Statewide 911, $255,200. Accident report number 24, $8,000. Sem opioid grant award, $60,000. Wirearms training, $12,000. Clerk's perpetuation fund, $46,400. Aviation grant, $350,000. Airport improvements, $15,000. Misdemeanor, $70,000. Lit, P S A P, $743,000. Fenders sex violence, $5,000. Opioid restricted, $72,520. Opioid unrestricted, $17,508. Voca grant, $84,400. Identification security protection, $1,700. Local emergency planning commission, $10,000. Health S B four, $147,670. Lewitt, be public safety co-share, $1,488,630. A C R G P aviation, $9,000. A R G O aviation, $22,000. Cares relief fund aviation, $12,400. Cares L H D, $75,000. American rescue plan, $2,407,144. Which is a total of $26,597,113. We will open it up to any public comment. Okay, there's no public comment. We'll go ahead and close our public hearing for the 2024 advertised budget. And we'll reconvene our normally scheduled council meeting for 9/11/2023. E D C, you're up first.
Thank you, Ken. Good evening, everyone. I have a number of appointments and in one case, a nomination that I will ask you to make this evening. The first is for the Economic Development Commission. Under state statute, the Board of Commissioners is responsible for making all three appointments, but the council is entitled to make one nomination for one of those three seats. This will be for a term ending at the end of January 2026. It's a shortened term so that they're staggering and then going forward, all of the terms are four years in length. And I am asking the council to nominate Blake Caston for this seat. Blake has been on the C D for a number of years now. He is particularly interested in the county's revolving loan fund program, which by virtue of the ordinance you have passed and then the resolution the commissioners pass, is one of the responsibilities that the E D C will have beginning on the first of the year. Whereas right now, the full Community Development Commission makes recommendations to the commissioners that will be transferring to the E D C. And like I said, Blake is interested in that program and managing it wisely, making good use of it to smart growth in the county. So unless the council has any questions or alternate choices you like or recommend, I would ask that you nominate him for consideration by the commissioners. Yes, please.
Yes, we will. Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second to nominate Blake Caston to the E D C board as the council representative. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Blake Caston it is?
Thank you. Next, the council is responsible for appointing three of the seven members of the redevelopment commission. These are always one-year terms, except that this term would be 15 months because we are establishing it in the middle of the year. And as I had explained in the email, there are two options here depending on the council's preference. I have three members, three potential members who are interested that I have presented, Brian Ledley, Katie Birum, and Isaiah Tidwell. However, if it is the pleasure of the council to appoint one of your own to the redevelopment commission, then I would simply present Mr. Tidwell's name to the commissioners for one of their seats next week. I don't know if any of you have given any thought to that, whether you want to take on that commitment. There is nothing precluding an elected official from serving, except as I noted in the email, the dual lucrative position rule applies so that while other members of the commission could be entitled to per diem for meeting attendance at council member. But if you would like to have a voice directly representing the council on that commission, that is your prerogative. So I'll leave it up to whether or not any of you are interested in serving or not, or if you just want to appoint the three citizen.
The wish of the council, or anybody here that would like to sit on that board to represent the council directly? Right, if not, then I'll entertain a motion to accept the three nominees that Mr. Orger has provided. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes.
Thank you. And then the last one I have for you this evening. The council is entitled to make two appointments to the Tourism Advisory Council, one ending at the end of 2024 and the other ending at the end of 2025. Again, after these initial terms, they will all be to your terms that'll be staggered. I am asking that you appoint Vernon Gillum, the property manager at Tepica New River State Park, to the 15-month term, and Kristi Nicholson, the fairly new owner of Acorn Oaks Campground, to the 27-month term. And then I'll be asking the commissioners to make appointments.
Right, I'll entertain a motion to accept those presented. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes.
That's all I have of each unit unless you have any questions for me?
Thank you. All right. We have Leanne Wright from the Community Foundation that wanted to advise us on some information.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Leanne Wright, the Executive Director for the Community Foundation of Plaski County. With me today are members of the Plaski County Drug Free Council, the Health Department, and our school superintendents would like to have been here, but they had other obligations this evening. So I wanted to thank Drug Free Council for making time, as well as the Health Department, this evening. So to provide you a quick recap, the Community Foundation and the Plaski County Drug Free Council, our local coordinating council, or L C C, have partnered to address substance misuse in our community. The two organizations developed a community action plan, which was based on community need and feedback from the conversations with our community report developed by the foundation as a part of the Lilly Endowment Gift Seven Initiative. Based on the community action plan, on February 13th of this year, the L C C and foundation made a joint presentation to the joint commissioner and council session with recommendations on how to utilize the funds from the National Opioid Settlement money. At that time, we also asked permission to apply for the F S S A matching opioid grant, and we received permission. The community was awarded $402,800 by F S S A for a grant period of July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2025. At the time of the award, the L C C requested the Community Foundation to serve as grant administrator as the foundation has the ability and capacity to do so. The grant application was based on the community action plan and approved at the joint session. F S S A chose specific items from the community action plan to fund. They were expansion of Intrepid Phoenix, which is a workout program for recovery, implementation of a drug treatment court excluding drug testing, support for the existing community navigator position, and support for creating a prevention coordinator position. The F S S A grant is a reimbursement grant, meaning that specific organizations involved must first pay and then be reimbursed by the grant. F S S A requires monthly reporting or reporting and will begin monthly reporting as soon as the state provides that contract. Intrepid Phoenix has already begun expansion of services, and I have been in conversation with the Superior Court to begin the drug treatment court implementation. They are ready to begin as soon as the state provides the grant contract. I've also been in conversation with our auditor's office to ensure that everything moves smoothly as possible for the drug treatment court and community navigator position. Since the grant was awarded, an additional opportunity became available when the commissioners opted into S B four, which is the state's public health bill. S B four requires the position of a school liaison officer. Part of the requirements for the school liaison officer focus on preventing substance misuse. We've been in communication with the schools and the Health Department to develop such a position as the school liaison officer duties overlap with the roles and duties of the proposed prevention coordinator position. Our schools are eager and supportive to begin, and the Health Department has also agreed to house this position. The school liaison officer slash prevention coordinator position can be funded by the F S S A matching grant for two years. It should be noted that the F S S A grant covers salary and fringe benefits, essentially meaning this grant can fully cover the cost of this new position without additional support from the county budget at this time. When this grant concludes, it is possible that the state appropriated funding from S B four would cover the position under the Health Department's budget. The Drug Free Council, the schools, and others have been diligently working through the appropriate channels to get this position established and approved with the hopes to have a person hired before the end of this calendar year as time is of the essence. Are there any questions so far? That was a lot of information. Yes, sir. One for both schools. The grant will provide up to $45,000. It doesn't have to be the full 45, but it also covers the salary and fringe benefits. Well, I'm new, so I'm not sure exactly if it's the county council that needs to create the position and then the position is salaried by the Health Department, so.
Yeah, it would come up if it's a county employee being paid for out of county grant funds, then would be possibly taken over by county funds at a later point. That would be a county position, and it has to go through the process of, you know, getting a job description laid out, salary set for it, you know, what that position is going to be. So there is a bit of a.
Yes, sir. So they would provide training, teacher support, curriculum development, coordinate with external programs such as Remedy Live to come into the school to do programming to prevent substance misuse. So there is a job description that has been drafted in partnership with the Health Department and is currently, I believe Mr. Tankersley also has it. So my question for you is, what do we need to do to make this position happen before the end of this calendar year?
We got to get through the process.
Okay.
You know, and the beginning is the job description and getting into our county attorney to get, you know, get, make sure that everything's approved and it's done in a fashion.
Second question. The commissioners have requested a monthly email update on the progress of this F S S A grant. Would you like to be included in that, or?
I think that would be wise, yes.
Okay. Fantastic. Any other questions regarding this grant or anything else?
Anybody else have any questions for?
Okay.
Just, I guess, you know, if you want, you'll work with me and, you know, the Health Department and our attorney and we'll try and walk through the process so we have something to bring back to the council so they have something to actually sink their teeth into.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. From EMS training materials to computers and printers, Health Department, $100 for miscellaneous services and charges to meetings and seminars, $27.70 from miscellaneous supplies to office records. Health, $3,000 from contracted services to repairs and maintenance. I T, $50,000 from I T director to consultant. Commissioners, $70,000 from miscellaneous equipment to, $2,800 to chief deputy and $6,900 to sergeant's deputy. Aviation, $2,000 from bulk fuel or sale of fuel excise. A motion, do we have a second? All right, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Passes. We have a couple of additionals that need advertised. Health, $40,000 from CARES Act to contracted services. And then C D C, $12,750,000 to courthouse bond. And then we have an additional for the highway that was advertised already. $50,000 sand and gravel, $200,000 by tumors. Do we have a motion to?
Yep.
So I was reading the emails that got sent out to us that did the $40,000 of the Health Department's community navigate position. Is that accurate?
Yes, somebody from the Health Department wanted. Yeah, Dr. Alman.
I didn't hear what you would ask. It says, I was reading the emails that came out. Was the $40,000 to create a new position?
No.
What's that for then?
It's for, oh gosh, you are helping me out because I didn't. My, that's my thought was for a new position. Oh, or a second contract position or a new employment position. I don't know. That's my understanding. I would have time to pick the one that I wanted. You want to see it?
Thank you for letting us talk about this. So the, back about five years ago when we did the cost cutting, we eliminated position. We combined foods and sanitation and office. We do increase the number of inspections in the county because with COVID, we did not do a lot of the inspections. So the state has asked us to separate foods and sanitation. Foods and environmental, better said. So that's what this position is for. So the, and then emergency preparedness. We've been, we are critically involved with emergency preparedness when it comes to health issues, disease spread, vaccinations, a vector control of things that can cause disease like rodents and mosquitoes and things like that. So we have been asked to separate those two positions, the foods, and that would include then, Adwina, she already has experience in. So she would do foods and office manager. Then the environmental would take on emergency preparedness as related to healthcare issues, like I said. So that's the new position.
Has that new position, you know, as we're speaking with Leanne, has there been a job description, everything drawn up for that new position and all?
Yes.
And it's been, it's with the county attorney, I assume, then, or?
I don't think it's gone through his desk or across his desk.
I don't.
No.
I haven't seen it yet either, so.
We're going to have a board meeting Monday night, so that's part of our process, but help board me.
I guess I, when something like this progresses, talking about your board meetings, does this stuff, doesn't it go in front of your board first to be approved and you get a vote on your board? Then you say how you're going to build the Health Department and then that would come forward? As the steps go down?
Is there, is there approval required? And I mean, we've talked, this is the year that we're changing the makeup of that board. We're asking, we're going to be asking them to take a much more active role in the Health Department because of these, you know, these kinds of issues.
Right.
Because of the change coming, you know, coming down the road. So you're right to ask that question.
Any other questions for Dr. Alman?
Yes, yes, to replace the one that we cut five years ago.
I mean, I guess, me personally, I would think we would go through the process, get the job description, get all that stuff to the board members and everything. I mean, I know as, you know, others have said, you know, time is of the essence. Unfortunately, government, nothing happens quickly. And, you know, I would think we need to walk through the process and then, because right now, we don't have anything to bite our teeth into, say, what we're approving the money for.
I guess the question, when is the deadline for additionals? So we have until that meeting to get you the details. And I guess in our, for our defense, I would say, I feel like we need to give you as much information as soon as we can. So that's, that's our, that's our mission in presenting it, so.
No, and I do appreciate that, you know, like I said, you know, the sooner we're in the loop,
It's already, it's already been written.
Right, correct, yeah. Like Laura said, you can, it can be approved for advertising. That doesn't mean that it can happen until we.
I can send it to Tankersley's and I could send it to the council also.
Yeah, that, that would be the step to make.
They will be presented before the Health Board on the 18th.
Okay, thank you.
So that's fine?
Yeah.
Now, if approved for advertising, this one, when we advertise it, you're going to address it at the October meeting. If for some reason it was not getting through and you decide that you do not want to approve it at that point, it'd be after, for the next one.
I, I guess if there's a question as to, you know, the procedure, I agree with Laura. So we don't have to double advertise. I would say that we have time to advertise it in the October meeting. I would drop that off the advertising list and say, we'll revisit that at the October meeting and that way we can move forward and we're not holding things up. That would be my suggestion. All right. So I guess, do I have a motion to table the Health Department till the October meeting? Have it advertised? All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes. So we'll table that and readdress it at the October.
Thank you. Anything else for me?
I'm good. Anybody else have anything else for Dr. Alman?
Thank you. Not here yet. Yep, six months, at least six months. I have to find somebody willing to take my job here.
Jeff did.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the C D C additional that needs advertised and approve the additional for the highway. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, then approve and sign the 8/14/2023 regular meeting minutes. Everybody should have seen them or sent them out. I will entertain a motion to approve them as presented. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the, um, approve and sign the eight fourteen twenty twenty-three regular minute, meeting minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those who oppose? Passes. All right, we have the sheriff and the highway salary ordinance, uh, with, uh, for the twenty twenty-four, uh, year. Everybody's seen them get emailed out. Any discussion? No, the matrix is not done away with. The, it's the, or nobody has made a decision, that's board's decision, but to my knowledge, nobody's made a motion to do away or, uh, go away from the matrix. These numbers would go into the matrix. But on, yes. Yeah, it follows all the documentation that was built off the matrix that was presented at our last. I mean, it, it, it won't be any different than what we have today. Won't, I'm not saying it'll be any better, but it won't be any worse than what we have today. So you'll have a solid order. Yes, the pay scales are being changed. Um, off the, off the documents that were presented, uh, oh, I, I, well, that, that's what we did last meeting. We voted on that to, I mean, and, and, and I'm, well, I mean, if we can revote on it, that's fine, that's fine. I mean, if it makes. Right. Yeah, and that's. Right, and, and that's we're gonna vote on tonight, is this? Right.
Ken, if you can get motions on the documentation you saw last month.
Yeah.
Then I will send her the one that we did for highway, and I'm sure Fred can send the one for, um, sheriff as soon as we're back to offices.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we've, we did that last month, but we can redo it again tonight, that's fine, yeah. Okay. Yeah, we can do that. All right, uh, then I'll, uh, entertain a motion to, um, approve the pay scale for the highway and the sheriff's department.
So your motion is to approve the pay scale that we don't have on the challenge to, and to approve these papers with wage, with the wage increase October first. You go ahead and put both behind what you share.
Yes. And then with the, and then that other question we have, or without the longevity, the matrix play, it still, still looks like, is that what you're trying to get answered?
That's what I'm trying, that's what, that's what I think we're answering with the pay scale. That's what, that's the reason why we need our paper. Because I need everybody on the same page. And you're saying one thing and I don't know if I'm understanding what you're saying. And I'm saying, yes, that's right, but we don't know.
Well, uh, these papers and then I guess the answer to longevity, faith, and Fred will send to you.
Yeah, because the percentage of longevity and stuff are still staying the same. And if you look at the, the, the document that other than the, 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 uh.
And there were changes to some of the percentages.
Right. Right. Right, yeah, the, the, the number for the, at the top was changed to make the percentages work out. But, you know, this was the document that we, that we approved last, last month, which has all the pay scales and stuff on it that was, that was approved. So, you know, the it, it was, all I can say is I can pull the emails up. It was emailed to everybody. But. And, and we, we I would like to believe that with all the discussions that we had last month, the council knew what they were adopting. If you need a paper signed, that's simple for us to do. We'll reapprove it and we'll sign this document and we'll sign this document and you'll have two of them that says, you know, what we need. That meets, you know, the needs of, of the auditors. So.
That's my motion, too.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It passes. Very did, yeah. All right, to go on to the next, uh, thing on the agenda is the, you know, is the matrix of payroll and wage discussions. Um, there, there, you know, as we said, when we left the last meeting, we started working on the, uh, putting the regional averages into documentation for all the department heads and elected officials. Um, that work has, I think, been pretty much done and been vetted. So it will be going out to all the departments. It'll be no later than the end of this week. So the department heads do, we need responses back from and look at the numbers, see if they have any tweaks or any changes that they feel need to be made to it and then brought back to the council for further discussion. Then we'll move forward from there. Or anything else from the council that they want to add or put in? All right, any uh, budget discussion? We closed our budget hearings for, as I was told, our budget meetings, they're not hearings. Uh, we closed them at, at our last session and said we would revisit any more conversation at this open meeting. Meeting of the council. Is there anything else that, anybody wants to add to the budget discussion or where the budget's at or what they feel needs to, uh, happen, go, happen going forward? Is there anything else you need from us, Laura? Yes. We're not prepared tonight. Nobody has anything to have another meeting to discuss it or does the council feel good and they're ready to move right on to the October? Right now, myself? Uh. Have it in front, uh, have it all in front. All. Yeah, yeah, and it will. I mean, it, it, it's the same, it's the same process that we did with the sheriff, you know. Worked with him, tried to get the numbers worked out, same thing, working with all the department heads and stuff to get the numbers worked out. And then, you know, when that gets out, then it goes out to all the council members, like I did before, or about two weeks before. And so everybody has a chance to look it over and, you know, once again, like discussion.
Again, I guess there are questions a few more. Let's say we go to the October meeting and somebody had a heartache about it. You know, are we probably getting up against deadlines?
Yes, I have to have it to the state by the end of the month, in October. So if you don't have, at the October meeting, then you will have to have a special, special session. And I have to have ten days, so you're very limited.
Personally, I don't see any reason that this won't be out. I'd be, you know, back to the council within a week and a half. Should hit the October meeting without any problem. Plenty of time for everybody. Stuff. I guess, you know, if there's anything that hangs it up or makes it a big issue, you know, that can't be worked out between the board and the department or whatever, then, you know, we have a choice at the end of the day whether we just arbitrarily set, set a, set a rate and move forward or, you know, that department waits or, you know, but the goal is, is, and I think everybody is, you know, knows that, you know, they're, they want to do all they can for their employees. You know, we've got around the six hundred thousand dollars that was, looks like will be coming to us in new revenue, which the number that I think we figured out was somewhere right, somewhere a little under that number. So we should be able to move everybody up to within the regional average, bring them all up at one time. Don't, I don't anticipate. Don't, or do I think anybody else does?
Do we have the board, um, issue addressed?
No, that we don't have.
We have not, the board, there is the Q building levy that needs to be addressed yet. Um, I think you're okay with the twin bridge, but we're going to discuss that there's two funds that we had to file to reinstate this last year. And so those are reinstated, but it's up to you on what, how much do you want that levy to be on both of those funds. Um, I will tell you on the twin building, it is limited to a ten-year period. And I did not realize that once you stop that fund and reinstate it, like the ten years expire all over. So when I said it, I said it for enough to cover you on the Q building, with the commitment to the hospital for the next three or four years. Now, you may not want to go with it. So in other words, your percentage of the tax, the property taxes is going to cover that commitment to the hospital for the next four years. If you don't want to do that, you're open to a, to a ten-year period and you can drop that levy down, which, which would then increase the levy to the, to the, um, agenda. So those are things for you to think about. Um, vehicles, there's vehicles in there we talked about and the, uh, wages. What we kind of like, they cover the differences, but we talked about part-time wages and we're talking about the rest of the departments. So we'll still have to have a full matrix for twenty twenty-four adopted very similar to what we've done tonight with the highway and the sheriff. But, but it doesn't have to be done on budget. It has to be done on the, on that.
I'd say we still have a few things that need to get knocked out, you know. So I have two choices. Have another meeting or come in early on October fourth, one and with answers for these last things that we need to do. What do we want to set? How do we want to handle the, uh, the board wage? Are we going to approve the vehicles? You know, what do we want to do with these levies? I would say, you know, everybody needs to do the research on them and either, like I said, we have another meeting or we come prepared on our October fourth overnight.
So, so just, I just want to verify a couple things. Once you adopt the budget, your job is basically done. And then if you deduct money in for vehicles in these different departments, then it's up to the conditioners to say, yes, you're going to be spending that money. So it's all within the budget. You know, if you don't want them, then it is taken out before you adopt, kind of thing.
Well, then, with, listening, this thing, a week and a half, we get everything and we find something that maybe we want to talk about. Can we just like, like email, say, hey, I'd be interested in, in early on, October, to talk about some more?
I have to, forty-eight hour period, you know, to advertise a special meeting.
So you said we'll have it a week and a half, so, right?
Yeah, I, I would think within the next week and a half to, you know, no longer, two weeks. So every, it'll be disseminated to everybody, you know, on, and anybody else that wants, you know, has their own idea or wants to do something are more than welcome, you know, so.
No, I'm good with what you said. We're, we're great people, our town. Whatever the study shows as far as the wages, we have a couple to give everybody else a raise too. I see many have sent in, I think, her being a corporate assessor, it seems reasonable to me. Uh, I think I'd have to talk to somebody a little bit more than Laura is just so about the levy, but I'm glad you said that, so aware of it. I would like to hear it a little bit more. You know, on that, yes, before the meeting, and if it's good enough, I, I, I think I'm good with what you're saying as far as who's going to get, you know, how the wage raises, you know, and what if they're going to do that, I'm good with that. I guess I still want to check the, the law or something pops up. I'm, we're one person, I don't care what else is saying. As far as.
So somehow if I just, you gotta do all the questions that I've yet to do to. And then you gotta say, you want to know by, let's say, October, try October. You know, by September twenty twenty-nine. I think that's just my turn day. By November September twenty-nine, I think, close to, close to January. Is that right?
Yeah, that would, that would work great. So does that work for everybody then? Well, Laura will email out the list of last questions that she has and work to get answers to them. And if anybody needs to have a sit-down discussion about anything in them questions or something else that comes up, then we'll let Laura know by September twenty-ninth to set up a special meeting. Otherwise, we'll just have some discussion over me. Alright. There any other budget discussion? Alright, we'll go to, uh, public comments and board reports. Anything from the council that they, any other things that they want to discuss? Or they have open items or any meetings they've been to that they want to share what happened? Alright, there is none, then we will go to public comment. Is there any comments from the public? Alright then, we will go ahead and close our meeting for nine eleven twenty twenty-three and we'll meet everybody back here October ninth. Thank you.